Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is February the 4th, 2016, City of Canton Council Meeting. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Father, we thank you for this day, for all that are here, and we ask that you be with all those who cannot make it here tonight. We ask that you be with us as we make the important decisions about our city tonight, and just be with us throughout the remaining days. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I believe we have state certification renewal and presentation. Chief Mitchell?
Back in 1999, the Police Department received its first Georgia Association Chief of Police Certification. What state certification is, is 129 standards and proofs, policies, that the organization must follow, must adhere to. Everything from reporting, the documentation, to filing, to the way our officers answer calls, where our detectives investigate criminal incidents, across the board. What state certification does is it ensures that the citizens of Canton are receiving the most professional, the professional police services that they deserve. Our officers are receiving the training that makes and ensures that this city receives professional police services. With that said, back in November of this year, an assessment team came to the Police Department from the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, and conducted an audit of our, of all of our standards and proofs for our state certification. And after they left, we got a very good clean bill of health, as they say. And in January of this year, January the 8th, I believe it is, I received this plaque. This plaque here from the state of Georgia, that basically states that we've received our fourth renewal, our renewal for our fourth state certification, which is for every three years. I humbly say this, I'm not gloating, I'm not saying, hey, look at us, but this is to show the citizens that we're going to professionally serve them, that we're going to have that mindset of community and an attitude of service. And this right here, what we have in place through the policies and procedures and standards ensures that. This could not have been accomplished without the hard work of our employees, and this is definitely not about me. And speaking of hard work, if I can help Officer Mark Gavala, if you can step down here, please, Officer Gavala's not one to be, to be in front of, in front and center, he is a behind-the-scenes worker. He's a very extremely hard worker for this Police Department, very valued worker, very valued member of this agency and a member of this city. He's our state certification manager, and the state of Georgia sent us also a plaque for his efforts because of the assessment team, how professional he was, organized he was, and it was one of the better audits that they have completed in quite a while. So with that, congratulations, sir.
Appreciate that. Public announcements, does anyone have any announcements that need to be made at this time?
Just three. The Main Street Tourism Groups are putting on ice skating, February 13 and 14, in Brown Park, right out here in front of City Hall, Saturday and Sunday, 2 to 7 both days. That'll give people something extra to do on Valentine's Day, to celebrate with their sweetheart, or the ones they love, including the children. It's a family-friendly event. Randy Richards and the Brothers Band will be playing at the Arts Center Saturday, February 13th, at 7:00 PM. Tickets can be purchased at ticks.com for $10 and a little service charge. And Randy Richards Band is made up of a couple of Travis Tritt's cousins. The Historical Society is extending their exhibit, Our Evolving Landscape, it's a visual history of Cherokee County, through Saturday, February 13th, and the museum shop offers locally handmade goods. So as you can see, Canton's going to be very busy for the Valentine's Day weekend. Bring your families out and enjoy your town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rust?
Sandy, I just have one question about ice skating. I went to both Marietta and Avalon's when they had those skating rinks there, and they provide skates. Are we going to have skates? That's going to be included for $10?
Yes.
That's really a lot cheaper than what they did them for, so hopefully a lot of people will come out. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm not sure how this works, but I have a couple of things I wanted to mention, and these are not in order, y'all need to let me know.
Go right ahead.
The first one is to commend Chief Mitchell for being a part of the Cherokee County Class Leadership Class for this year. It's an honor, and we're proud of you for being a part of that class.
Great.
And the other one is the Gospel Fest, that is this Saturday night at the Arts Council, and I think the public is invited to attend that. Everybody that grew up with gospel music would enjoy it, I think.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any special announcements to be made? Okay? If not, the next item... I do have a couple of requests here. I want to make sure if the council, of the council, please speak into the microphone. We still have some folks that cannot hear, so if you don't mind, there's at least a couple here that tend to lean back away from the microphone, so try to lean toward it and speak clearly into the microphone, so everyone can hear you. And the second thing, request of the council, would be that, so that we can be sure to get the, recorded in proper minutes, whoever makes the motion, please raise your hand, so we can identify that with a city clerk, a motion or a second, so then we will do a voice vote on most items anyway. Item five, consideration to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to be made? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some move.
All right. Mr. Grant made the motion. Mr. Goodman made the second. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members are voting for the motion. You also have in your agenda package the minutes from the January 21st council meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, or deletions to be made to those? If not, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. We have a motion? Okay, we have Mr. Grant making the motion, Mr. Yawn seconding the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. In your, in your agenda package, you have the financials for the FY16, the month of December, and if there are any questions or comments regarding that. This is for informational purposes only. A 10-minute public input, we have one individual, Peter Sagassi. Come on up.
Sajis.
Hey, Sajis?
Sajis.
Okay. Sajis.
My God, can you say my first name? I asked you to pass my name. I just think pizza and cheese.
Piece of cheese? Okay.
Pizza cheese.
I got you. Okay. That was a long way off on that one, go ahead.
That's all right. Guys, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I know Mayor Hobgood, Sandy McGruth, thank you guys for taking the time to directly consult me via email with some of these issues I'm having. On McLean Street, I just want to start with our See, Click, Fix app that, you know, everybody's made aware of. My concern is that these reports are not being taken seriously, and I don't know if anybody here can assure me that these reports are being taken seriously. Do we have any kind of confirmation that they are being considered and taken seriously at all? From anybody here?
But this is a, unfortunately, it's a dialogue, and not, I mean, it's a monologue, not a dialogue.
Oh, I got you. Okay, okay, I see how this is. Okay, so maybe at some point in time that will be addressed here.
Right.
A lot of these issues I'm seeing go on for up to maybe six or seven months. I'm not seeing much progress in the area, and you guys are aware of my most recent complaint with code enforcement. That was in regards to an animal control issue, and I'm wondering why animal control is not actively involved in the city's endeavors. I understand that Canton Police is stretched out pretty thin, and I hate to utilize the resources unnecessarily. I've worked with animal control in the past, and I've had great success in dealing with nuisance complaints, and I'd like to see maybe animal control getting back involved to help alleviate some of the code enforcement and Canton Police-related calls. I also have here stormwater issues on McLean and Cartersville Street. I'm sure you guys are also aware, I've kept in pretty close contact with Dave Hattabian, he's doing an excellent job being transparent and communicating clearly what exactly is going on with some of these issues. From my understanding, it's been put on hold, or it has been moved to be discussed at a later date. I just need to make sure that these issues, stormwater-related, are not being swept underneath the carpet, and they're going to be addressed at a certain point. I do have substantial flooding that is coming from the new implementation of stormwater renovations on Marietta Road, and they are directly impacting the structural integrity of my home, and there's not a whole lot that I can do about it. I have already expended time, money, and other resources to try to alleviate some of these issues that I'm having, and, you know, pun intended, I am in over my head to a certain extent with the stormwater. Also, the road erosion issues on McLean and Cartersville Street is also stormwater-related. The shoulders of the road at some points are probably three and a half to four feet deep. I would consider that worthy enough for a guardrail or something towards the end of McLean, and hopefully you guys will get around to addressing some of these issues. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I would, I think we should ask maybe our city manager to take a look again, probably, at these issues, and give us a report at our next meeting, if you don't mind doing that. There are several issues there, I know. Okay. Under old business, the discussion, an action on contract with One to Play Baseball, Inc. for the management of concessions at Etowah River Park. Tom?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The changes that all of you requested were made on the contract and were agreed upon by One to Play Baseball. They were submitted to Bobby Dyer as well, so he's had a chance to look it over and put some of his language into the contract as well. So the four points that you guys made a couple of weeks ago have been highlighted, so you guys can see them there on your screen. So I guess the action now is for you guys to vote on it, Mayor, is that correct?
Right, that's right. Anyone have any questions about that contract? Comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Let's see, we were going to act on that this time, because we kind of delayed it a couple of months, okay. We'll entertain a motion. Motion, Ms. McGruth, second.
Second.
Mr. Yawn, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Item D, discussion of styrene odor. They're still, still getting some complaints sporadic, to say the least, regarding the smell, plastic smell, apparently radiating from an area down in the industrial park. And so we need to take some action, I think, to try to alleviate, alleviate that, while it's not, you know, at least I know there's a lot of people that may be smelling that odor, but not saying anything, but we haven't had that many complaints, but we've had quite a few, and they're still kind of cropping up from time to time. So I'd like to see if we couldn't do something to figure out how to address that. We need to, need to address it in some way. Ms. Goodman?
Yes, last weekend was particularly bad, last Saturday, when I walked out of my front porch, I almost threw up. I tell you, it was that bad. And Friday afternoon, I had three calls from different people saying that going from exit 19 to exit 20, when they hit exactly even with that building, it was just about knocking them over, inside their car. Also had a guy at Home Depot, I was over there buying some things, and he said, "What is that odor?" And I smelled this here before. And so it is, it was quite strong last weekend, and it comes and goes. I think the wind does a lot with it, just to be honest with you.
Sure, yeah, I'm sure.
But it was very, very strong last weekend.
I think maybe we need some volunteers for a committee in it to work with the city manager and map out a strategy for dealing with it. Mr. Goodman, who else wants to volunteer with that? If not, I'm going to have to appoint somebody. Okay, Mr. Rust, okay? We will, we'll, you two will work with the city manager and try to figure out some strategy to do that. Okay. Okay. I've got another one for you, so I'll be, all right. I understand, I understand. Item, item C, discussion of Phase Two of the Inflow Infiltration Study. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Hattabian is here, and he's got some friends with him, so I'll let him take on this project.
You know, if you recall, last time, we gave you a draft technical memo of the first phase of the I and I program. We want to move forward with the second phase, which we've kind of outlined as the downtown area. Move this project forward so we can reduce a lot of that I and I, which we're just getting killed with at the wastewater plant, so. I don't have a final cost on it yet, but it'll probably be on the order of magnitude of what the first phase was. It's about the same number of manholes, about the same length of sewer that we'll be doing smoke testing, and I've got representative from Brown and Caldwell here, if you want any other questions or detailed information on that, so.
Okay. Anyone have a question on that? Mr. Rust?
Just as a point of reference, Dave, I think it was Monday and Tuesday, we got almost two inches of rain. When we get that volume that quickly, what does that do to our wastewater? How much extra water are we processing that we shouldn't be processing?
It averages about a million gallons per inch of rain.
Extra.
Yeah.
Over and above what we should be processing, yeah, okay.
So, for example, I think we had a sustained flow, a discharge flow of about 6 million gallons a day going out the plant after that rain event. Yeah.
Dave, on Phase One, back up to that just a minute. We've completed Phase One, as far as the testing goes.
As far as all the testing, we're in the process of developing bid documents to put out a contract for a contractor to do...
The corrective measures.
Corrective measures, as well as getting price, unit prices for a bunch of stuff that may not necessarily be in the Phase One contract, but may be in Phase Two. So we have a lot of unit price items that will be in this contract. For example, we've got, you know, television inspections, slip lining, and things like that, that we'll be using, or may not be using, but...
So what, did I understand, you say what you might do is wait till after Phase Two to let a contractor correct those?
No, no, no. No. What we want to do is to get the contractor on board to do Phase One, and it would be, say, an annual contract, and then we will finish up the investigation in Phase Two and let them go to town on that, but...
Okay.
We're hoping to get that out on the street within the next couple of months.
Was there any, any way from Phase One study to determine the level of problems that were there as far as volume increased going into the wastewater plant?
From what I can gather, I think this Phase One, we kind of went from our pump stations and worked out to some of the interceptors along the river and everything, and it was actually in pretty good shape, what led us to believe that we're having issues elsewhere that are, that are feeding into this, into these main lines, so.
Okay. And what, okay, what is the, did you say what the cost of Phase Two study?
It'll be, I don't have, I haven't gone through it yet, but we budgeted about $130,000, which is what the first phase was, and like I say, we're about the same order of magnitude in terms of length of pipe and number of manholes and...
So this is coming back two weeks from now?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll have all that at that time, for sure. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Rust?
Just one more, Dave. How many phases do we have after two? Is that it?
It's hard to say. I mean, there's still a lot of areas in and around, outside of downtown, that we probably want to hit. It might be, you know, a couple more, maybe. You know, a lot of the newer subdivision, we probably won't do. I mean, that's, those systems are probably pretty tight, but...
They presumably won't be of the same cost magnitude that the first two. Is that possible?
It'll depend on the number, again, the number of, number of manholes and length of sewer.
Are we doing or not doing some of the newer subdivisions?
Not now, no, we're not doing them right now.
Okay, that would be at the very end, I guess, if we saw it was necessary.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, discussion of the appeal of the Oversight Committee denial to allow Green Line Brewery to paint exterior brick at 192 East Main Street. I believe Mr. Patton is out of town, and Mr. Green is going to handle this.
Yes, sir. At Green Line Brewery, I submitted an application to the Oversight Committee back in December to do some facade changes to their place of business they're hoping to operate at, at 192 East Main Street. Part of that was to paint the facade, the existing brick, to a black color. The Oversight Committee has consistently denied the painting of unpainted brick, with the exception of the Audio Intersection, which was painted several years ago. So during the December meeting, the committee approved several items that they had asked for, and we tabled a vote at Ms. Walker's request on painting the brick, so she could get back with the owners of Green Line to see if that's something that they really wanted to pursue. In January, she got back in touch with us and said that they would like to paint the brick. The Oversight Committee met, we voted to deny the painting of the brick, and they have subsequently filed an appeal before you folks, seeking to have that overturned. I think in your package, you've got some pictures that shows what the existing brick looks like, and what they envision it to look like once it's painted, with the gooseneck lamps and the, and the black paint and what have you. And of course, they're here tonight to present their case.
Okay, okay, the Oversight Committee is composed of Mr. Green, myself, and Ken Patton. And I can, I can tell you from the discussion, there wasn't, the decision really wasn't that what they're proposing doesn't really look pretty nice, to say the least. I think from at least my perspective, it was that we were painting virgin brick that had never been painted before, and the consensus of other requests been back through the last few years have been that we, we did our best not to approve the painting of unpainted brick. And, you know, there's no doubt what they've got here looks, looks nice, but that, that was the consensus, and they wanted to appeal that, and they appealed it to the council, and it will be the council's decision. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Rust?
I'm looking at these two proposals, and one is certainly to leave the brick the way it is, and that's, I guess, the way we want to do it, or the, you've decided to do that, Steve, is that correct? I mean, you've denied them, so their only default is to go to the unpainted brick.
This is, no, this is the appeal. They're appealing that.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, right now, the way it stands, the only thing they can do is leave it unpainted and put those signs up.
Unless the council...
Unless we, yeah, that's what I'm saying, right now.
Yes, sir.
But it is the preference of Green Line to paint the brick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just have one technical question that maybe Candace could answer. The sign, Green Line, is that intentionally speckled, or is that just a fault in the picture?
The intention is to give it a feel of...
Of older brick.
I, I think the intention was to distress it a little bit, just to show what it might look like once it is painted on the brick, but it's not really the intention for it to have a speckled feel. It'll, it'll have a more of a solid look to it.
If, if you go forward with a painted brick, if we were to override, would you still tuck point before you painted it? It looks like that's what you were going to, you were going to fix, patch the brick, and I assume that means tuck pointing it. I'm looking at some spots that look like they need to be tuck pointed.
Yes, the, the intention is to certainly patch and try and repair the brick as best as possible. Yes, the, the intention is to certainly patch and try and repair the brick as best as possible. And I, I think that the original intention with the concept of painting the brick was that this would be covered up. And in addition to thinking of the concept of painting the brick, once we've had the discussion about the preservational concerns around painting, we have looked into a few other options. I don't know if now is the time to have that conversation, but we have looked into other applications such as brick dye or brick stain. I think the biggest concern with painting brick is that it no longer is a permeable surface, so it doesn't allow the brick to breathe. So we did a little bit of research to see if there was a product out there that would then allow the brick to breathe, in a sense, not compromising the integrity of the brick. So we have looked a little bit further into brick stain. We would like to offer that up as a possibility, to see if it's something that you all would consider. I think that it would then achieve the same look that we're trying to go for, but hopefully it wouldn't, again, be an issue from a preservation standpoint.
Mr. Grant?
I, I, is this building as 12 feet or 15 feet? I mean, it's pretty narrow.
Uh, 12 feet. It's very narrow.
You know, I see both sides of this issue, because if we allow this, like Audio Intersection, we're gonna have a multicolored Main Street. And, no, let me just finish. I mean, we're, we're talking kind of out of both sides of our mouths, because we just painted the backside of that whole building. That whole strip has got a beautiful mural, and we, to say we don't want painted brick is kind of hypocritical, if you might say. But you feel very strongly that black's the way to go. The issue that I see is that I, I would go either way personally, it doesn't matter to me, I'm gonna go there. But the, the point is that you must have done this for a reason, and we just have to look at what impact this is gonna have on the other 47 businesses that come in and want to be painted, because we're setting a precedent. We did with Audio Intersection, we're setting it again with you, all of a sudden, we're gonna have multicolor. And I guess at the final look of the city of Canton, we want it to be 14 different shades of everything up and down the street.
I, I certainly understand it, I understand that concern. And I'm, I too am a little conflicted about this, I do think that
What was your idea though, wasn't it?
There need to be, I think, design standards in place. But me personally, when I look at the vernacular of Main Street, natural red painted brick isn't the standard. It probably was 70, 85 years ago, but it is no longer. Now you see a combination of stucco, painted brick, there are various color brick. So I can't really say that that is the consistent nature of Main Street. And if we're talking about sense of place, and again, the consistency, maintaining consistency, there really isn't a consistency there right now. So I do think it's obviously something that needs to be a discussion moving forward. But in this place and time, as far as Green Line is concerned, and conveying their brand to the consumer or to the public, they feel like this color scheme is the best for their business.
You're doing research on the paint right now, are you gonna put up paint that can be removed, and would removal destroy the brick?
I'm not 100% sure about that. I think that most paint from brick can be removed. And I think the concern then with the stain is that it could potentially not be removed. So while it maintains the integrity of the brick, if someone comes down the road 100 years later and wants to make it natural brick again, well, they can stain it a natural brick color, but I'm not sure that it can be removed at that point.
Didn't the insurance company paint their brick, but that was not on facing on Main Street? Not the, the law firm that painted brick by the park, the new little park there?
Right.
That, that brick is all painted, but it doesn't, it isn't really on Main Street.
It's, yes, it's on the side there, yeah.
I wish the brewery, you know, 50 years of success, but the fact is that somebody may come in there and not wish to have black brick. So that's the other thing, so.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, it's a little bit of a.
We can't see the future.
Yeah, I, I, truth of the matter is, I think either way we go, this, this is gonna be successful, so that's the good part.
Agreed, I hope so.
Thank you very much, Candace.
John, you, you mentioned Audio Intersection, that brick was already painted.
We just did it a different color.
That was a different color, yeah, it was not, okay. Mr. Grant?
That was the point I was gonna make, because I was involved in the Audio Intersection project, that it was previously painted. It was just a change of color.
Yeah.
And Mr. Yon can verify that since it's from former business location as well.
Yeah, since I was the one that painted it last before. And that's the only reason we painted it, is because it was already painted, and it was not in great condition. And that's, my only concern with this is stain or paint, either one. There is no good way to remove paint from brick without damaging the brick, sandblasting, scraping, any of those. So it's kind of a bell you can't unring, is my only real concern. But it's just something we'll have to think about a lot.
Ms. McGrew? Hold on just a minute. Okay.
Thank you. Is the in-proposed facade number Two, Green Line Brewery, is that painted on the brick, or is that a sign attached to the brick?
It's painted on the brick. Signs painted on the brick are allowed. Thank you, that's all.
I'm sorry, Sandy, would you repeat that? Okay, you got that, all right. Ms. Wilson?
Let's see, is it working now?
Yeah, it says Huffman there, but.
Okay, I was talking whenever, whenever Sandy asked her question, my question was, are you advocating for either proposed vacate number one or number two?
We are, we prefer, Green Line prefers number one. This proposal was given for the facade grant submission. So we wanted to show the Design Committee of the Main Street program what both options could potentially look like.
So you would accept number two if that was the, if that's what it happened?
If we are not, if they are not allowed to do option number one, then option number two will be.
And I think Sandy asked you, that's just the door, right? It doesn't involve, does it involve any brick?
No, no, that's just the painting, that will just be painting the door
On number two?
and then painting the sign on the building.
Okay.
And we have, we have been granted the sign, we've been given our sign permit, so that was approved.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? If not, then we will discuss that, and we, we'll, I guess the decision will be on the next agenda, which will be two weeks.
Okay. Thanks, guys, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right, item B, council review and consideration to pay Bluffs' annual property owner's assessment. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir, as, as you're aware, we have property up in the Bluffs, and every year, we have a common area maintenance up there. We have received a, a, an invoice for our annual dues to that HOA up there for our property. It's $2,769. Just for some historical information, that amount is basically the same on an aggregate basis for the acreage that we have up there, because the budget for the Bluffs has been the same the last three years. So we didn't have an increase in our HOA dues up there, but we do have to approve the expenditure.
Should be a decrease, though, shouldn't it? Considerably, we only own four acres now, and we owned 20 before.
The dollar amount is a, is a decrease, but the rate at which you would be charged per acre is the same. So the total dues that they're collecting are the same.
So what's the total amount?
The total amount's $2,700 for what we have up there.
How much was it last year?
$8,000.
Okay.
And, and this may also include a little bit on the reservoir, too, correct? It, it has, it has our portion of the reservoir and our fire station property up there combined on the one bill. So that's why you see, it's a total of eight acres that are included.
You know, I didn't, I didn't realize we had been paying on the reservoir.
Yes.
I don't think we did before.
Yes. It's always been rolled into this bill.
I'll be honest with you, I didn't realize we had even they've had that, they've had that reservoir property a lot longer than we've been paying that bill.
It's really the reservoir office piece. And for instance, when we get ready to install the sign that goes there at the reservoir office, we had to go through the covenants, we had to go through their review process for that sign and all that. The office part is part of the Bluffs Association.
Okay, you know, last year, as I recall, it seems to me like we were told that that bill of $7,000 was for 20 acres, based on a per acre basis. And there was never any mention about the reservoir stuff at all. I mean, that enhances the property immensely up there.
We'll look further into it, but, but my understanding from them was that this bill was for our portion of the reservoir and our remaining property at the Bluffs after the transfer to the school district.
See, see, number one, we did not buy that property, reservoir property, from Technology Park Atlanta. That wasn't, we didn't buy it from them, so we shouldn't be paying that.
We'll look into it.
I mean, that wasn't in there.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we'll look into it and get an actual calculation. What I'm trying to say is the pro rata amount is the same, it has not increased. We'll look into it, see exactly what they calculated into it.
No problem.
Does that include any on the, the public access? Okay.
Okay. See, next item. Discussion of the housing overcrowding, excessive number of cars parked at residences. We continue to get complaints, I do, and I'm sure some of the others probably do as well, as the council members, that we have single-family residences with multi-families residing in those, in, in single-family zoning areas. And that, in some cases, there are cars parked all around the houses and, and on, in yards and so forth. There's been, you know, numerous complaints. I think we've got to, you know, really take a look at that and, and see if there's some way to address that situation. I mean, you know, we, I, I think everyone, every reasonable person has an idea of what a single-family residence actually is, you know? It's pretty much what it says it is, I think. And I understand if you wanna, you know, if you have a cousin or in-laws come and spend time with you or live, maybe even live in the basement or something, but that's a pretty close family. But we've got, we've got to do something about that.
Here are the definitions, we pulled these for you. Single-family detached unit is a standard single-family residential building, a detached building containing one dwelling unit. A modular home should be considered a single-family detached unit. Family is defined as an individual or two or more persons related by blood or marriage, limited to the occupant, his or her spouse, their parents, and children. So cousins, aunts, uncles, that's not included in that definition of family. Or a group of not more than three persons excluding servants, who need not be related by blood or marriage, living together in a dwelling unit. So you could have roommates, you could have up to three roommates. In our definition on accessory uses, this is where we talk about garages and things like that. Resident, in residential districts, we break it down, accessory uses into a couple of categories, and I'll go over two of those. Private garage not to exceed the following storage capacities. One or two family dwelling, four automobiles. Multiple, multiple family dwelling, two automobiles per dwelling unit. Group dwelling, which would be bigger than a multiple family dwelling, is one and a half automobiles per sleeping room. Open storage space or parking area for motor vehicles, provided that such space does not exceed the maximum respective storage capacities listed above. So, single-family home should have no more than four vehicles, according to the code. It does provide a caveat that there can be space for not more than one commercial vehicle licensed as one ton or more in capacity for family residing in residential areas. So if you had an individual who worked for a company, and they bring their vehicle home, they could have that on their property and use it for their purpose, or a home-based business, but they're limited to that one vehicle on their property.
Anyone have any thoughts? Mr. Rust?
Billy, I just got a call last week, I think it was, somebody had nine vehicles in a home next to theirs. One of them was a, you know, a travel trailer, a big travel trailer. I referred them to you. No, no, I didn't. Actually, I sent them to the police department, code enforcement, I says, I can't do anything but call this person at the police department, and they should be able to help you. Now, that, that person is probably a violator of some sort, but here's the interesting thing. There's an individual that I also know that has nine cars. His personal vehicles are all nine cars. He's building a second garage for four cars, he's gonna stack them up. Are we, are we saying as a city that he's gonna be breaking the law if he has garageable space for all of his vehicles?
According to our code, if his property is single-family, four vehicles.
Now, who needs nine cars? What single-family would need nine cars?
Need is not the issue, it's want. If you want nine cars, you buy nine cars.
Then you rent a storage facility to put them in.
Well, I'm just trying to get the definition. If he was to get approval of his local community, HOA, whatever, to build that garage and add, have eight cars, 10 cars, whatever, in his, he would be breaking City of Canton rules, is that correct?
Any individual could come in for a variance before the council. If you had an individual, say, you have a couple, and they have triplets, and the triplets are all turning 16 at the same time, and they have the wherewithal to buy a vehicle for each of the triplets, and now they have five cars, then they could technically come before council and say, we're looking for a variance, because we have a need for five cars, and we have property for five cars. The intent of this is, is to, to get away from situations where you have a home that doesn't have enough space, and you're pushing vehicles out into the public road. And what we get into is with this definition of family, you know, we get into situations where you might have multiple families dwelling in a single-family resident, they're not meeting the definition of a family, and they're going above and beyond what our ordinance relates to as it relates to vehicles. Now, we could always go back in our ordinance and look at, at some specific situations. We have homes in downtown that don't have any land necessarily around the home. I don't think it was ever intended that that home should be able to have four vehicles, because there's not possibly a place for them to park four cars. When these definitions were put in place, they were put in place as, as a general standard. I think this would be a great topic at the retreat.
Two extremes, we, we have seen proposals for homes to be built in Canton that have one-car garage, presumably two adults living there, both having their own cars. You're gonna immediately put one of those cars on the street, or in the driveway, maybe, perhaps? It's a little hard to get around it when you got two people trying to leave, one of them's blocking the other, but.
Well, and from a development standpoint, we need to make sure when we're getting the designs in on those homes, if the intent is that it's gonna have a couple living in there, more than one person, that the driveway's actually long enough to accommodate the vehicle that might not be parked in the garage. Because you do have situations in some neighborhoods in the city where they do have a driveway, and they do have a garage, and they are parking a car in the garage, but they also have a large extended tail truck that sticks out in the middle of the road, and that becomes a public safety issue as well.
If someone wanted to build a home with 10-car garage, and there are two people gonna live there, how, as, as approval process for that building permit, we'd have to take into account the fact that the guy's gonna put, you don't usually build garages unless you're gonna put something in them. So are you saying that our building, people should not approve 10-car garages in Canton, Georgia? Five-car garage, six-car garage?
Not in that zoning.
Right.
Not in that zoning.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Grant? Oh.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to professional vehicles.
Thank you, I'd like to go back to the professional vehicles on the property.
Mm-hmm.
Can they be parked in the street or just on the property?
Well, it, it would really depend. If it's in a neighborhood and the neighborhood allows parking on the street, then maybe so. I mean, it, it's really gonna depend on the situation of where the home is located, does that make sense?
It does.
Um, you know, but, but even then, you know, we do have our own ordinances in the city as to what direction they have to be parked in, how close they can be, where they can be parked on the street, whether or not they can be parked in front of certain, you know, safety things like a fire hydrant, and those are the things we're looking at. Classic example of a neighborhood that we get calls on all the time about parking in the streets, Mountain View. It's one of those neighborhoods where we do have cars parking on the street. And I think in general, most people understand that the family down the street's having a Super Bowl party or they're having family over for a birthday party, they're gonna have more than four vehicles. And as long as that's happening over a reasonable amount of time, most people don't take exception to that. It's when it's happening every single day that it's the issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, uh, three things, on the commercial vehicles, I know our code says one per household or per residence. Um, it doesn't say anything in there about hours where that is can be parked because I know we have an instance, especially on East Main Street, where we have a business operating out of a home, um, and multiple company vehicles are parked in that, at that house during the day, maybe not overnight, sometimes there are more than one, but are there any hours or regulations to avoid that? Because if they're not, I think there's an issue there.
So the definition as it relates to commercial vehicle in here is just related to those commercial vehicles over a ton. So if you've got an individual who has a van that's not over a ton and it may have a logo on it, that doesn't meet the definition in, under commercial vehicle in here. So if you've got, you know, you've got somebody who has a, um, a, a painting business and they have two trucks that are their vehicles and it has the logo on it, as long as it's not over a ton, as long as it's under four in a single family, it would meet this definition.
My second of three, um, topics. Our code ordinance does not currently prohibit parking in the yard or on the grass, am I correct?
Um, hold on a second. I don't believe that it does. Mr. Green might answer that one.
Our code has, uh, currently written, does not allow, or, I, I back that up, does not mention anything about where the car can or cannot be parked. It can be parked in the front yard right now. We are meeting with the planning commission and we are talking about some, uh, updates or amendments to the UDC, and that is one of the issues that has, uh, been brought up by several members of the planning commission. And, um, we will have a, another meeting with the planning commission to go over, uh, these changes. It will come to this body, uh, for approval, and, and yes, that is something that we're looking into.
Great, thank you. I certainly would like to see that in our code. And then the third, uh, point is our definitions of single-family, number of cars. We know we have multiple, multiple, multiple instances of that code not being followed, so my question is, when and how do we enforce that, and?
I, I think the, the biggest area where we have the code not being enforced relates to tenant-based properties. And that is an area that we, as a city, really need to look at, how we deal with those particular types of homes in general. Um, you know, it, it, it would be a difficult task for our code enforcement officer to be responsible of going home to home to say, who's related to whom, you know, how many people are related to whom in here and all that. Um, it would be a much easier process if our landlords would follow our existing codes, which say, this is a single-family home, you know, that does not pertain to aunts, uncles, and non-relatives. We should do, we should be able to do a better job with our landlords as explaining what that is. But we also need the enforcement in our code and we need the support of the council as a whole, how we deal with those property owners who aren't meeting that, who are going above and beyond to circumvent our codes, especially as it relates to cash-based business of tenants.
Sounds like we got a good topic here for the, another topic for the retreat there, uh, Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Grant asked my question about who enforces this kind of code. It seems that, how many code enforcement officers do we have?
We have two positions for code enforcement in the city.
And we're going to fill both of those?
We have one that is filled right now and we're working to fill the second one.
Because it seems like what I'm hearing are a lot of people that have issues that are code enforcement issues. And we need to determine who's responsible, you know, for, for enforcing this. I'm not sure it's the police department, but maybe it is. But I think that needs to be a part of our ordinance as to whose responsibility it is to enforce it. And I know, you know, you can't always see everybody that's at home. It's very difficult, but just 'cause it's difficult doesn't mean we do have to enforce it.
Absolutely, and, and part of, part of the issue, and, and I think the gentleman hit on this earlier tonight, you know, for instance, animal control, right now that falls to our code enforcement. County's having some issues getting all of their ducks in a row because the marshal's office should be able to provide that animal control for us. Until they get those agreements to us that we can sign, that they jointly take over that control, we're stuck with that problem. We would love for the marshal's office to handle animal control for us.
Right.
As long as our ordinance as it relates to animal control is a mirror image of the county ordinance. We go above and beyond theirs, then we have to take care of it.
Right.
Uh, but that's one of the issues that's there. Um, additionally, it's, it's difficult in certain instances when code enforcement issues come in from an anonymous person. We don't always get all the information, we may get a picture, we may get, you know, a little text that says, this is the problem. We don't get the full story of what the issue is. And so it's hard to enforce when, you know, you, you also have to enforce the rights of a property owner. We don't wanna go into somebody's property and, and there not be an issue there just because there's a neighbor that doesn't like their neighbor, you know.
Understand that. However, I do think it's an issue that needs to be addressed and probably written into the or- ordinance, whose responsibility it is, because I don't think it's fair for the code enforcement officer who's called out to say, well, this is not my job, this is, you need to call the police. And then, you know, maybe it's not the, a job of the police, we need to know whose responsibility it is to enforce it.
Well, and here in the city, our code enforcement officers are post-certified, they are sworn officers with the city. And that does give us a little bit of leeway as it relates to going onto private property, serving them with citations and things like that. Um, you know, and there are certain times of the year when code enforcement gets more calls than other times. Uh, we get a lot of phone calls during the campaign season when people are worried about the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, and what we try to do is not, at least our staff, they try to be consistent on how they're focusing on areas. We can't drop everything to deal with one issue as it comes up, but we're trying to consistently deal with issues across the board, uh, and it's a lot of work for two people.
And hopefully, when we're able to hire another code enforcement officer, some of that will be alleviated, thanks.
It's not necessary, is it, to have a certified officer as the code enforcement officer? Or at least maybe one of them be certified and one of them not be certified, or, you know.
It, it is not, some communities run their code enforcement out of their building department. It was like that here in the city for a period of time, ours is run out of our police department. Uh, the chief and I had a discussion earlier today about the possibility of maybe having a third position that is not a sworn position, that can help with the paperwork, that can help with putting things together, that come before the court, that can help with making phone calls and investigating, you know, through tax records who's the owner of the property is and making those things possible. We've talked about different ways to improve it, um, and, and I think, again, this is a good discussion for the retreat because the city council really needs to, needs to know all of the parts that go into code enforcement and needs to have an understanding of what it would take to fully enforce every single code that the city has. And we need to look through some, some of the codes that we have may need to be removed, they're just old codes. We just need to quickly look through that and see what the vision of the council is, those things that you do want addressed, and those things that maybe we need to remove from the code that don't need to be addressed.
Do you think we could shoot for July first being up to speed personnel-wise in that area?
I think so, I mean, we, you know, we've done a really good job at the police department in filling vacancies as they've come up. But having said that, you know, and this is no slide on the chief, he does a great job. But when our code enforcement officers are also, uh, uh, sworn officers and we go through a period where maybe we have a resignation or a termination and we get down on a shift, we may have to shoot our code enforcement officer out there because it's more important for them to be a sworn officer at that time, patrolling in the city, than it is to be focused on some of the code issues. I'd much rather protect the residents from, you know, criminals and, and those that are out there to do harm when we don't have enough staff in place. Having a civilian to fill a role, you know, I think that is something, and, and we're up on our staffing, so I don't see it as much of an issue moving forward as it has been in the past.
Chiefs, do you have something you wanted to add?
Susan will yell at you if you don't use the microphone.
I don't mean to interrupt, take too much time, but, uh, we did have a conversation today. Um, we, right now, we were, in October, we were nine officers down. Um, we're currently now three, and we've had interviews today. And what we're doing is hoping to have, uh, those three positions in place in the academy in March. Um, once we're able to have, um, all of our field training op- officers come out, uh, we're looking toward, um, and I'm saying mid-spring, spring, early spring, mid-spring, to be able to fill a code enforcement officer position. My goal's to fill it before Ju- July first, I think we can easily do that. Um, and then I can, uh, our other, we're, assistant chief and I are speaking today, is we have our parking enforcement officer, um, when he's not doing parking enforcement, I can have him doing a lot of administrative paperwork. Because in the downtime, I've also had that parking enforcement officer doing some code enforcement work too, and he's, he's not, he's a civilian, he's not sworn. So our goal there is to have probably a dual role, parking enforcement and code enforcement, him helping the, the legwork, administrative end of it, and having the code enforcement officers out in the field. Once we do that, we're gonna have to look at, we got blighted properties, we've got the animal control, we've got the other issues, um, with basic ordinance violations, trash, tires, these types of things. And we'll probably specialize either officer in one doing probably Officer Parker, he's very good with blight, probably something to that effect, and the other officer have been able to handle some other issues. And they're gonna cross each other, but they'll be cross-trained, so that's, that's the goal.
Good, uh, Mr. Grant, yes, something?
Yes, uh, Mr. Peppers brought up an issue about the anonymous submissions. I think that's one tragic flaw in our system, um, because we have nowhere to verify the information. I mean, I would like to see that all submissions have a name and address attached to them so that we know that they are citizens of the city, and that would give at least us a, a place for the officers to vet that complaint, uh, to make sure it is legitimate. But I think at a minimum that those complaints that are non-anon- non-anonymous should get precedence over anonymous complaints, but.
Sure.
Anyone else? Mr. Rust?
I just had one comment, uh, I think our previous enforcement officer got a lot taller when he showed up with a gun. I, 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 I got to know him pretty well, Randy, and, uh, I think it really helped him with enforcement issues. It gave, gave him a, a, certainly a look of authority. But I, I think we just have to be real careful, some of these pe- code enforcement issues, people take really, really personally, and you have to be careful, you're not putting someone in harm's way. As crazy as it sounds, people take issue with somebody coming in and telling them they have to do something different. So I have to be real careful, I think.
There's two schools of thought on that, you know, some people don't necessarily know what are in our ordinances. And they don't know that they're breaking a code, um, and maybe their neighbor won't bring it to their attention, and so the neighbor brings it to the city's attention and then we're out to enforce it. They're gonna have a very different response when a certified officer shows up than if they had a phone call from someone. So there are instances where it does offer more power to have the certified officer there, but it may take the situation to a different level than if it were just through a phone conversation. The other thing is that, as it relates to code enforcement, the natural reaction for a citizen is they want immediate action. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, and, and our, our attorney can tell you this as well, in some of these code issues, legally, the action takes a long time. Specifically as it relates to blighted property, we have to notify someone, we have to tell them exactly what the issue is, they have so many days to rectify it or make comment. In certain cases, you know, you're, you're dealing with a tenant, you have to find the landlord, you know, so some things take longer than what the general public might see, and they may think that we're delaying ourselves on something. But what we're actually doing is following the proper steps as laid out in our, in our, in our state laws and local laws. So it's just a, another hybrid answer I'll give you.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you, wouldn't we be good community leaders if we were to give our ordinance in Spanish to the tenants? We have a lot of, um, tenants who are Spanish, we have a lot of English-speaking tenants as well. And it is ultimately the responsibility of the landlord to make sure the codes are followed. But I think we would be, uh, extending a good hand if we had our information translated.
One of the areas where we specifically deal with the tenant community on a more personal level than we deal with, with anybody else in the community is in our utility billing office. Most of our tenants pay and they pay by coming in. Um, and, uh, one of the things that the chief and I talked about earlier today was being proactive on some of our most noticeable ordinances by having a simple sheet that we hand out to our customers when they sign up for utility accounts and have available down there, so that when they turn on a service, they know these, these are some of the things you have to do. These are the things we expect of our city residents, um, even if you're a tenant. Um, so there are some proactive things that can be done there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, discussion of the youth programs, uh, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you very much. The more I delve into a youth master plan, the more I learn, the more excited I get, and the more I learn, I don't know. It's, I talked with Deidra Hollins the other day, who is executive director of CASA, and she was a, a wealth of information. And one of the things she suggested was that a digest of available services be created. It has been created in the past, but recreated and maintained, and this digest would change periodically. And a youth master plan is a living document because it deals with human beings, and it would also change. And now I'm learning why cities have taken up to four years to build their youth master plan, where I had hoped it would take Canton eighteen months, I think it's gonna take a little longer than that. I'm learning that focus groups are involved, uh, to do research with adult focus groups, adult, uh, surveys, along with youth-focused groups and youth surveys to determine the goals and the areas of concentration. I'm learning that we're going to need a budget for this. So I'll be talking with some cities such as Charleston and Savannah, um, and some others, how they got through their process and talk with them about, about how much it costs. Then, when we come into budgeting in the late summer, early fall, I'll have a better idea on what to ask council, do we want to go forward with this and how much I think it will cost.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else have a comment on that? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, city managers report.
Just have two items, one is to, um, to let you know that since we approved our annual capital improvement element, which y'all did at the last meeting, we have been recognized and honored with an award as a qualified local government, um, which means we're eligible for assistance from the state. The second thing I have, um, is related to one of our retirement plans. Uh, the city has a few retirement plans that they've used in the past and then phased out. Uh, this is one of those, it's a four fifty-seven plan, I believe there's only one employee that falls within this plan, but since the plan existed, we have to keep our documents up on it, you know, until that employee, um, is no longer a beneficiary of the plan. And as part of that, any changes that. And as part of that, any changes that are made on an annual basis by the IRS, we have to change our plan documents to do that. So I wanted to mention that to you tonight so that we will put this on the agenda, uh, for later in the month. You have to approve it. I can sign it, but you need to approve it because it is a change to one of our plans, and it does take a resolution of the council to do that. Uh, but this has come into, into our knowledge. We wanted to do the research on exactly what the changes are. Basically, our, our, um, provider of the plan says there's really no changes in the plan. There were some changes to some IRS definitions, but we have to recertify our documents as part of that, so I was just gonna bring that to your attention.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, you don't have anything else? Okay. All right. Uh, we will need to adjourn to executive, uh, session for the discussion of real estate disposition. I have a motion to do so. We will not be coming out to, uh, cast any votes, but we, we'll be discussing real estate at this point. We have a motion. Mr. Young made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Hey, let's show her how that thing works now.